And regardless of the interventions that we're using, those students still remain struggling academically. So I put my head together with a graduation coach and we decided to really focus on those students and figure out what we could do at West to help those students be successful. And we decided to come up with something that we refer to as FLEX, which is freshman learning excellence. But before we made the proposal to our principal, we decided that we needed to have some background information so she would approve what we wanted to pursue. And we started looking at what do we have already in place for our students? We know that all of the current high schools in the county have those items that are on the board available to students. They have a moderate amount of social emotional support. We utilize instructional extension funds, but still, those 3% of students, 4% of students that aren't graduating still exist. And those 4% of students are just as important as the 96% of students who are graduating. So we want to really make sure that we focus on those 4% of non-graduates. We looked at who wasn't graduating. We've got two groups of non-graduates. We've got those that are supported in special ed, ESOL, and 504. And then we have the non-supported students. And those are the students that typically just want to be invisible. They just want to be left alone in the back of the class and they don't want anybody to bother them. If it were up to them, they would just feel quietly and never, you know, and just be left alone. So those are definitely the kids that we wanted to focus on. And then when? I don't know if you guys have ever worked at a high school, but second semester junior year, it is always like all hands on deck, who's not going to graduate? Get those kids through. But in reality, that's not when we should be focusing on our students. We need to be identifying those students earlier. There is a direct correlation between ninth grade success and graduation. And we looked at the commonality of non-graduates and they all had a very difficult ninth grade year and failed their ninth grade year. So with a little bit more research, we did discover that, like I said, there is a correlation, but also a lot of students that aren't successful as ninth graders academically, there's a lot of other things at play. Transition between schools is very difficult. And so we wanted to make sure that we provided them with scaffolding and support for that. We know that ninth grade is key. So how do we fix it? Well, we decided that we were going to develop a ninth grade academy of sorts. And it's a hybrid. It's not a true ninth grade academy, but it worked for West. And I'm proud to say that in the last three years, we started this in 15, 16, three of the other five high schools have adopted a similar program and have attended our parent nights and been able to take what we've done at West and make something that fits for them. So this hasn't only helped the students of West, but has helped all the students of Forsyth County. So I'm very proud of that. What we knew we needed was something to make West smaller. How do you make a 2,700 student school smaller and more comfortable for these students? How do you make those invisible students bond with one another? Bond with their teachers? Make sure that they are visible and we know that they're present. So that was our task. And here, that is not what was supposed to be there. So how are we different? Well, we start with a learning inventory. Students at the very beginning of the year learn how they learn and teachers learn how they learn. These students travel together in the middle school concept, so it helps them with the transition. We are able to provide lots of performances and field trips. We did not need an additional funding, which is very important. We were able to gather a grant and some individual donations to help with incentives. And we provide social and emotional support. We have one designated counselor that meets with these students once a month and checks in with them, as well as we are partnered with Forsyth County Mentor Me. So when starting, we said this is not going to be an overnight process. We started with the first cohort of those 25 students that were going to be our FLEX students. And the second part of this was the fellows. And I'm not going to talk too much about that because the fellows presented to you last spring as part of this school spotlight. And the students came and presented to you, but that involved a lot of leadership building. So the benefits for the students, I feel like, are very clear. We present this slide at parent nights and the parents are very excited to have their children involved in this. In fact, we are at a point now where we are having to turn parents away because they want their students to have these extra interventions. We provide incentives for these students. A lot of the students need some extrinsic motivation. So sometimes it's just a note from a teacher. Maybe it's a football game ticket, but something to keep them going to say, "Hey, I acknowledge you. I know that you're trying your best. You might only have a 78, but I acknowledge that you're trying." There's a lot more time for progress monitoring. And we have coffee and conversation with parents. So we've really been able to bridge that gap between the home and the school. So parents can come in and just talk casually with the teachers. We start at the eighth grade. I feel like now our middle schools have their finger on the pulse of the type of kid we're looking for. We chose our teachers very wisely. And we also were very careful in choosing what their schedule looks like. So we provide this to parents as well. You're going to see two different sides of your screen. One has green bubbles and that's what our FLEX students, that is what their course progression looks like. And the second is blue, which a typical student, that's their course progression. You're going to see that the red are the FLEX classes. There's a SIM study skills, which is like a high school one-on-one, provides them some time for organization, but also provides them time for some social emotional just debriefing. We also have them taking biology as a sophomore to reduce the number of EOCs that they're taking as a freshman and provide them some support freshman year for that, those difficult science classes. And additionally, you can see that as the course progresses, they don't need as much support. We want to be able to task these students with all the skills that they need so by the time they're seniors, they're not traveling together and they have all of those tools in their toolbox already. So we were so proud of our first cohort. Three years ago, we were ecstatic. I think the data speaks for itself. We're talking about two groups of kids. Our in-progress students are our FLEX students. The not in-progress students are the students that essentially didn't make the cut. Maybe their EOG scores were just a little too high. Maybe they had major attendance problems and the counselors didn't recommend them. But those are your not in-progress students. Our second year data was not strong. We had to do a lot of reflection. We had four students that were removed from the program and sent to Gateway and it skewed the data a lot. And so we did quite a bit of reflection and some changes to our program for this year. But what you're looking at now is our current cohort data. And this is taking their English tests, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. You can see the darker line is the FLEX students. The lighter line are those students that are not FLEX. And although there's a slight decline, our students are doing very well in comparison to the other students. I feel like the science scores speak for themselves as well. Again, our students are not taking biology, but with that Earth Systems or Environmental Science class, their scores are much higher than those other ninth grade students. And math as well. Our students are blocked with the teacher. So that teacher really has the opportunity to personalize that learning and do lots of hands-on activities. And it's been fantastic for our students. They are excelling and that has also been shown in their EOC scores at the end of the year. So the second part of this is the fellows program. Like I said, it really is a leadership program. It has inspired the ambassadors. I know that North now has commanders. It's just the idea of having mentors in the building, upperclassmen. They have done large-scale freshman orientation. They teach lessons that they deliver and that they create during IF that are focused around seven habits. And our first two years have been very successful. This year, we kind of thought big and needed the Why You Matter Challenge, which was focused on the Forsyth County news. And you can see our very own Dr. Salome on the screen. She participated as well, as all of the feeder schools did too. And that was great for our kids to be able to see the West community working together. Mr. Mercer also approved us to do the Post-it Note Challenge where we left all Post-it notes on all the freshman lockers, just to kind of help build that school culture and make them feel that they are a part of something. We did a brief survey of the freshmen to see how they felt the fellows were helping them. As you can see, about 65% of the students feel like having the fellows in their IF and having access to an upperclassman as a mentor is helpful. But what I'm most proud of is the fact that 51% of freshmen tried something new this year because of the fellows influence. And I feel like that's really, when we're talking about making schools smaller, I really feel like that's what it has been the all in the head. We have some changes for next year. We presented last, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Woodley, and I presented to you last month about our new schedule next year. So that does create some changes in the FLEX program. We're eliminating the freshman one-on-one classes. But the teachers feel like they're going to be able to implement those skills organically throughout their classes now that we've been doing this for two and a half years. So I feel like that's a win-win. We are going to do another large-scale freshman orientation. And we're doing more strategic mentoring with our change of schedule and really kind of reaching out to parents and teachers to identify the students that are most in need for our fellows. So I look forward to see what this year's cohort data looks like. We really are anticipating that we're going to see these students continue to progress. And again, I thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, Molly, what about, you said that a lot of parents that want their kids to be in this program?
Right.
Are these the kids that really don't fit the profile of the kids that go in this program? Or they're just borderline, they're a few steps ahead that they couldn't make it through the normal schedule without this help?
It's a mix. We have seen recently that a lot of the parents that are reaching out and saying, "Hey, I would really like for my child to be involved in this," are students that probably could be perfectly successful in a typical ninth grade schedule, but their parents just want that smaller class size, that smaller family feel that the FLEX program offers.
But don't you think that the freshman fellows would fill in for that role that you're talking about, helping them to incorporate?
They do. And we try to help, yeah. We try to help the parents understand that. Next year, we're going to put fellows in the actual FLEX classes. So they'll be in all of their academic classes. And I feel like that will help, that will help as well. But yes, fellows, they really do help students. And it's just a matter of helping to ease those freshman parent minds that even if they are in a larger class or aren't in the FLEX program, we still are taking very good care of them.
That's good.
Do you see yourself growing the program though, to possibly the next 25 that possibly need this? When you're looking at those scores and that data?
Yes. So actually, so we've only done it these three years with 25, but when North came and met with us at their parent meeting, they're like, wow, we have more kids. We have at least 60 kids that we need to serve. So they kind of did it larger scale. Their students don't travel together. So what we're looking at now is how can we grow the program to meet the needs of our students that truly need that? That truly need that additional scaffolding and support.
So when you say travel together, are they in every class together?
So they're only in the classes together that are red. Let me get back to that slide. And I surveyed the freshmen. And I said, "What do you like about this program? What do you not like?" And their number one thing was, "I made, I love my teachers and I made my best friends for life." And then their number one complaint was, "I get so annoyed at the kids that are in my classes." So I mean, it really is that catch 22 that they are finding their place. But, you know, they're, they do like their sophomore year that they're only together for those two classes that are in red.
One other question. If the bond passes, West is scheduled to get an addition like Lambardiscott, to add roughly 300 students, make it easier. Will that help in any way? You can do more?
Oh, of course.
Better access, not being trailers will be?
Yeah, I think right now, we have them, we didn't want to segregate the students and have all of their classes right next to one another. So they are logistically throughout the building. But I feel like if they're, the more space that we have, the more we're able to do, even like with when Mentor Me comes in through the Forsyth camp, they need space to work with these students. There's, we have a lot of outside organizations that come in. We have guest speakers come in and talk to these students. And of course, that additional space will be very helpful.
Good. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ben Jones?
All right. My name is Ben Jones. I've been in Forsyth County since 2004. I taught at Liberty Middle School, Social Studies with Dr. Salome. She hired me. She was so nice to hire me. And taught Social Studies and was the graduation coach there for the last two years I was there. And then got the honor to be at Silver City Elementary for four years as an assistant principal. They put me in kindergarten though, and that was terrifying. But it's a whole other story. And so I did that for four years. And now I'm doing that South Forsyth Middle School for two years. So I've loved this program. And again, thanks to Mr. Perkel and Sherry for letting us do this. And my presentation is called Invest in the Root. So in December of 2015, the Georgia Department of Education came out with a study to determine why nearly half of teachers in Georgia were leaving or thinking about leaving the profession. And so a survey was completed by various teachers across varying experiences around the state. And many questions were asked. But two questions stood out to me when I looked at this report. And it was these two you see here. Would you encourage teaching as a profession? And what are some reasons, list some reasons teachers leave the profession? So after, during the survey, 66% of the 53,000 teachers that took this survey said they were unlikely or very unlikely to encourage a graduating senior in high school to pursue education. Some reasons they listed for teacher attrition were non-teaching responsibilities that they had, teacher evaluation methods that were in progress at the time, and levels of quality support. What was also interesting was they were able to list things that weren't on a standard drop-down list. And it was all about how they felt. They felt disrespected, they felt stressed, and they felt unsupported. So as I reflected on this report, I thought, well, what do our teachers at South Forsyth Middle School think? What is their perception, how they feel about school? And so we created a very short, two-question survey that was open-ended. And basically, we asked, "What feelings and emotions are involved when you think about school? And how can we continue to shape the trajectory of the culture in positive ways?" Some of the responses were very interesting. So for the first question, "What feelings and emotions are involved when you think about school? What hoops do I need to jump through before I can really teach? I remain neutral, happiness and frustration." Some were much more positive. Positive and supportive place, teachers are valued and supported, and a second home. For the second question, "How can we continue to shape the trajectory of the culture in positive ways? Drop busy, extra things, allow teachers to just teach, value teachers' input, and continue the open door policy." As I reflected on these comments and kind of took everything together, it made me think of a few quotes. The first one is from Simon Sinek. And he says, "Working hard for something we don't care about is called stress. Working hard for something we love is called passion." And then of course, Todd Whitaker, who says, "It's people, not programs." So as we took all of that into account and as we thought about what our next steps were going to be, we knew that we had to focus and work intentionally on the culture and climate of our school because we thought that was essential before anything else. And we also know that if you want the fruit, you must invest in the root. And so based off of this, we came to some understandings. First of all, we understand that if our teachers lack passion, so are our students. If our teachers don't love their job, the teachers, the students won't love learning. If teachers aren't encouraged, then our students are going to be discouraged. And we also looked at the students. We thought that was important also. If our students aren't heard, then they're not going to listen. And we understand that our parents, now that there are some parents' misconceptions of school today will hinder our relationship with them tomorrow. So with this information, we acted. So for teachers, one of the first things we did is that Dr. Jackson's the other assistant principal at our school. We have a goal that every day, Dr. Jackson and I are going to write three thank-you notes to teachers every day. And we put them in their boxes. And we've got a phenomenal response from them for that. And some of the stuff they come back, that's one of our favorite things they said to us was, "You are really paying attention to what's important." And just through these thank-you notes. Little things that we do are things like treat trolleys and breakfast and jean days. You can kind of get a sense of when things are a little stressful. And so, you know, get out the treat trolley, hurry, go to Costco, Miss Patty. So that's what we do. And we get that going and teachers love it. And it really picks them up. Boy, the big things we did right before winter break was we had a lot of like games and challenges and trivia and all these kinds of things for the teachers. And we got the kids involved a little bit too. And we created a prize room. So if teachers won the challenge for the day, and teachers are really competitive. If teachers won the prize, they went to the prize room and got a prize. And so we had lots of fun. And that's a difficult time with midterms coming up and grades and everything. And so it was a great kind of distraction and they looked forward to it. For the students, to empower students and give them the voice, we created a student advisory board for all the grade levels. It has two purposes. Number one, to discuss issues, concerns, and positive aspects of school life with administration. And number two, they select a teacher from each grade level every nine weeks that exemplifies the learner profile. We do the same thing for our kids every nine weeks itself. And we decided that it would be great for our students to recognize their teachers for that. Now, the student advisory board was hand-selected to ensure that it represented the diversity of our school. But it also was hand-selected so we made sure it wasn't all the high flyers who love school because they're high flyers. We put kids on there that were behavior concerns. We put kids on there who didn't do good in school. We put kids on there who were acting out all the time. And so these are the kids who we felt were sometimes the outcast. And we brought them into this group to empower them and give them a voice. And they have come up with some amazing ideas. We've talked about bullying in these groups. We've talked about ideas for connecting across grade levels. They feel like they don't know people across grade levels and they feel like they could learn from them. We've talked about how to celebrate individualism with a school of 1,300 kids. They also let us know when the sinks are broken in the bathroom so we can get those fixed because that's really important, that the sinks are working. So they've also thoroughly enjoyed. The picture you see there is the kids presenting the award to the teacher. And that's just one example of our seventh grade teacher, Ms. Marshall, getting an award from Miranda. And so they love getting in front of their peers and getting that award. So for our community, we have really harnessed the power of social media. And we are very purposeful about what we put on there. So we put the typical stuff about a band event and sports and things like that and timely things. But we're also very purposeful about putting things on there to show the day-to-day of what happens in the school every day. So we're showing kids working in the hallways. We're showing kids doing lab work. We're showing kids doing all these things so our community can see that it's not worksheets and lecture like it was when they were in school. It's different. And so we show that. And the other thing that we've done this year, and a video is going to show in the background just so you can see it, we started a series called Eagle Life. And currently, there are two episodes. The first episode was A Day in the Life. And so we followed two kids around the whole day, from getting off the bus to going to their first classes, to eating lunch. They kind of got annoyed when we followed them with the camera. But, and then the rest of their classes and getting on the bus. And just to show everybody, look, our kids go to seven periods a day. They don't stop working. They have little breaks. Look how hard your students are working and what they're doing. Now, the video you see here is the second episode. And it was called You're the Reason. What we, how we created this video was, we challenged the teachers to find one student they teach currently that inspires them to come to school every day. And they had to find that student, pull them out of class, and then record themselves telling the student why they're their inspiration. And so we showed that video. And you can see the kids are like, what is happening right here? But the kids loved it. They loved getting the gratitude. The teachers loved being able to share with the students why they're their inspiration and reminding them of their passion, about why they come to school every day. And our community loved it. It was one of the, had the most, some of the things, the most likes and shares and all of this ever. Because the community saw that our teachers are passionate. Kids are not a number. Kids are not a grade or a seat in a classroom. We are passionate about our kids at South Forsyth Middle School. What's been most encouraging throughout this is the effect that it's had in the classroom. We've seen teachers now taking more risk than ever. They're getting out of their classroom. They're painting their faces for Day of the Dead. They're bringing people in. They're doing all sorts of things that they probably weren't doing last year or the year before because they feel that the culture is such that they can do these things. It's inspired us and encouraged administration to try these new culture building initiatives that we wouldn't have done before because of the positive outcomes we have seen through the little initiatives we've been doing this year. So we understand that, as John Gordon says, "Our most important job as a leader is to drive the culture and not just any culture. You must create a positive culture that energizes and encourages people, fosters connected relationships and great teamwork, empowers and enables people to learn and grow, and provides an opportunity for people to do their best work." So we've learned so much this year and what works and what doesn't work. And as far as building school culture, and we look forward to next year as we continue to build a culture where we can develop talents, interests, and passions, maintain wellness and balance, and also be a place where all stakeholders come excited and leave inspired. Thank you.
That was great. I can imagine kids are probably excited to get off the bus or get there to school with all that culture that you created. That is just, you need to clone what you've done.
Well, thank you. It's a great place to be and it was already a great place there. And so we're just, it's just great to build that up. It's amazing.
I believe, I thank you for being out at the early carpool in the morning yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
I saw you out there, you had, trying to stay warm and, yeah.
Some days are cold, we know this, but it's a great, it's a great to meet the kids, yes, ma'am.
It's nice to see you out there.
You know, I think last month, we heard the social emotional learning update. And one of the key things they, and I think you tripped across it as well, is that we have to focus on our teachers. That's the foundation that we create for social emotional learning and that's important. So I think, I'm glad to see different processes coming together at the same place as we drive strategy. It helps us feel like we're on the right path. And you're, I think you've reached the conclusion that I came to is that daily gratitude is the way you create that culture.
Absolutely.
And so I see it happening and that's exciting.
Yes, sir.
One thing we know for sure, if teachers are happy, students are happy. And if students are happy, parents are happy.
That's right.
The combination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report on personalized learning update with Fonda Harrison, Megan Farmer, and Kayla Duncan.
The whole committee of us.
That's right.
It's exciting to follow both Molly and Ben, but it's a little intimidating too. They have great presentations. However, I really feel like a lot of the things they talked about really support personalized learning in that direction that we're moving as a district. So we just wanted to, we came last year, talked a little bit about our goals and what we were going to do with personalized learning. So we wanted to take the time to come and update you on what we've accomplished this year and some goals that we have for next year. So here's a quote. "We're currently preparing students for jobs that don't yet exist using technologies that haven't been invented in order to solve problems we don't even know are problems yet." So stop and think a minute. Think about a future problem. Can you even think of one? Now, with that future problem, think about an innovative solution to that problem.
There's just too many things you can't control.
Well, now who's going to solve that problem? We know who's going to solve that problem. It's the students that are in our schools and our classrooms every day. So we may not know what the technology is going to be. We may not know the solutions, but we know who's going to solve them. And it's our role, our responsibility to make sure that they do that. And what is that going to look like? Well, we know that our learner profile really encompasses everything that our students need to know to solve those future problems that we can't even imagine at this point.
It's true. If you look at our learner profile, this is nothing new to us. Our focus really is growing leaders for success. But how do we do that? How do we ensure that the students who are graduating from Forsyth County truly are successful leaders? Well, we believe that personalized learning is the answer to that question. And so like Fonda said, last year, we were able to talk to you guys a little bit about personalized learning and give kind of an introduction to the work. Well, this year, we've done a lot of work and we've done a lot of learning ourself. And we've really kind of refined our understanding of what personalized learning is. And we've come to the conclusion that it's not a thing, it can't easily be defined. If we were going to say anything about personalized learning, it's a mindset. It's a belief that every single one of our students can achieve. Every single one of them can lead. And that it's our job, it's your guys' job, it's teachers' jobs to make sure that every child reaches their full potential. And so we mean every child, every day, and whatever it takes. So that's a lot. It's lofty, right? How are we going to get there? So we think that personalized instruction is achieved when we follow through with these design principles that I'm going to share with you. And so last year, we talked a little bit about our tenets for personalized learning. But as I said, we've learned a lot and we've refined those. And so this is what we've settled on with the help from a consultant we've worked with. And the first one is authentic experiences. And it ties so well into what Ben and Molly shared. So thanks, guys, for giving us the perfect segue to this. But it's just when you're working with students, you're pulling in their interest and their passions. You're having them solve real problems. And you're connecting their learning outside of the classroom so that the tasks they do aren't individual practice of skills, but actual things that emulate what they'll do when they're outside of our classrooms. That's authentic learning and authentic experiences in a nutshell. For mastery-based learning, this one's kind of funny to me because people get really tied up in the whole time thing and age thing. But to me, mastery-based learning is just all about making sure every child succeeds and every child achieves. So we're no longer focused on, this child is six or seven, so they're in first grade. We're focused on, this child knows this content and has shown mastery of these standards. So they're here, or they're moving on, or they're not moving on. Does that make sense? And that's really what mastery-based learning is about. It's about, I'm learning based off of what I know and what I've shown mastery in. And once I show that mastery, I move on to the next thing. Not I move on because I've turned a year older. Next one is student ownership, and I think it's probably the most important principle because it's all about students being partners in their learning. I think both Molly and Ben talked about students having voice and choice. That's what student ownership is about. It's about students being invested. It's about them working with their teachers to set goals, to track their data and progress, and to even make decisions about their learning activities and experiences in partnership with their teacher. Tech-enabled, so technology is my background, and I love it. And I think we can do a lot for learning with technology. But really, it's only when it's informing and transforming learning that it's tech-enabled. And so that could be something as simple as an online formative check. And I use that data instantaneously to conference with a student and say, hey, here's where you are. What should we do next? What do we need to focus on? Or maybe I connect with an expert across the world. That takes us back to those authentic experiences if we want it to be real world. Or maybe they're using technology to create a product that they share outside of the classroom. That's when learning is tech-enabled. And then the last one, equity by design. We included this because we wanted to be intentional and clear that we think that learning experiences designed around these principles should be for all Forsyth County students in every classroom. And it's really not equitable if only some classes do this and some classes don't. So those are our new design principles. And we've been really fortunate this year to have our new personalized instruction coach, Kayla Duncan, work with some of our schools on designing instruction around these principles.
So I've spent a lot of time with four of our schools this year. And based on their readiness and their needs, I was able to personalize support for them, whether it was planning out units with individual teachers or content teams or working on instructional leadership teams. We really have worked on designing personalized instruction that best meets their community's needs.
So here are some quotes from people that Kayla has actually worked with this year, just so that you can see how important she has been in our rollout. And then on this next slide here, we're not going to read those, but just important things here. Very helpful, very appreciated, extremely beneficial, excellent resources, indispensable, helpful. Value and hard work she brings every day. So with her out in the pilot schools that she's worked with in this first cohort, she's made a great contribution to their school's work in personalized learning.
In addition to the individual work that Kayla's done with, oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Not all at all.
You're good.
In addition to the work that Kayla's done with the individual schools, we've been able to partner with a consultant, Two Revolutions, and they call themselves an educational design lab. And so they've helped us plan and implement some different design days for these schools who are participating. And so Astro Teller, you guys might have heard of him. He's the captain of Google's Moonshots as part of Google Labs. And he says that dreams aren't just visions. They're visions coupled with strategies for making them real. And I think Two Revolutions has really helped us get to that point where we can make some of these dreams real. And we've done that through design thinking. Some of you might have heard of design thinking before. Ben and I actually did a presentation on design thinking at Leadership Retreat about three years ago, I think. But it's really just a human-centered way to problem solve. And so it starts with empathy. So each of our schools, they talked with their parents, they talked with their students, and they talked with their teachers about how to make sure everyone within the school reaches their full potential and does truly get that chance to lead and achieve. And so then from there, once they have a clear picture of what their reality is, they're going to, they define, what's the real problem? What are we seeking to fix? And then they brainstorm tons of different solutions, and then they try some of those out. And so through this process, Two Rev helped us with the process. They provided a ton of resources, some of them just around the process in itself. Like here's how to best implement design thinking. Some of them around the big ideas and solutions that our schools generated through that process. So they've been very helpful, I think, in our work this year.
And through these days, each of the schools have, like Megan said, gone through this process. And at times, it was, okay, we're going to achieve all these great things. And then they'd call and say, Kayla, why'd you do this to us? We're having panic attacks. Our team is like, does not know what to do. And, but they really have made tremendous progress and have landed on some really amazing ideas. Little Mill, their ultimate goal is to create real-world mastery-based learning. Next year, they're going to have a group of pioneer teachers develop project-based units and various contents with the hope of eventually having cross-curricular units to provide students more choice in their learning and also grade based on mastery and not age or seat time. Matt Elementary is creating family teams for mastery learning. So these are vertical teams. They'll have kindergarten through second grade onto hallway and third through fifth grade. And it'll allow students to move flexibly up and down to get the instruction that they best need. And this is also going to help with their culture. They're a 1,200 student elementary school, and they really want their kids to feel connected and like they're part of a family. Shiloh is grounded in student ownership, and their focus is social emotional learning, authentic experiences, and mastery-based education. This year, with their instructional leadership team, we were really able to dig in and define what does mastery-based learning look like for Shiloh? We have learning targets and success criteria. So they have an action research group of teachers next year. They'll use that criteria in their classrooms. And then they'll collect data and make sure that they're staying on track towards their goals and moving to a mastery-based school. And then South Forsyth, they're charged to make their large school feel small. We know that they have 3,500 students. And even with Denmark opening, they're still going to be large. And they're going to help students feel connected by creating passion-based academies. They didn't want it to be just career academies. They really wanted the students to be invested in the learning. And so students, fellow survey, they gave information on what their passions are. And South has come up with five different academies. Teachers also are given a chance to choose the academy they're most connected with. And so students and teachers will be in academies where they are really passionate. And the ultimate goal is to have that based on conceptual understanding, moving away from just test-taking and memorization to where students truly see the purpose of their learning.
So what kind of passions do they have?
They have, I think they want to talk to you all about it at some point. But they do have a freshman academy. And so it'll start with freshmen, understanding what all their options are and really getting grounded in high school and understanding expectations and getting acclimated. And then they have other academies based on various interests.
Serving others would be one, things like that.
Yeah. Social, emotional peace.
The social emotional peace will be served within each. They'll have one counselor per academy.
Oh, okay. Great.
It's kind of like making small schools within their really large schools.
Yes.
All right. So these are just quotes, again, that they have shared with us. I truly believe that the work we're doing is what's best for our students. My design team and administration are passionately committed to revolutionizing the way we do school. Please continue to value and support that. This work is difficult, but so worth it. Another school said, consider allowing alternate practices, grading and reporting, alternate scheduling, allowing time for teachers for additional professional learning, allotment for instructional and/or social emotional and learning coaches. And then another school said, understand that we are in the trenches with this work, and some of it has been very successful, while some of it needs tweaking. This is a multi-year process, and we need continued support along the way. And that's really something that Kayla, with her support, and then also with Megan and our work with Two Revolutions, has shown us that it's the fact that it's not just this very specific framework. Each school has to determine what this looks like based on the needs of their students and the teachers in their buildings. So it's not just something that you come in and everybody gets professional learning on this and it's rolled out and, and, okay, see you later, you've got it. It's something that takes that support, conversations, digging, talking with the students, talking with the parents, talking with the staff about what are the needs of the students? What are the needs of the teachers? What are your passions? What are your interests? Where do you want to go? How can we get there? So it takes a lot of time and effort to be able to support the schools in moving in this direction.
And I think it's just important to point out, when you ask the question, and I asked the question, I believe, back in January when I went to the design team meeting, is you have very high achieving schools. Why are you doing this? And these are the teachers talking. This is not something they're being told that they have to do. And the answer was, it's what's best for kids. And I love that because that's coming from them. And it's not, you know, their principals saying, we're going to do this for these reasons. It's the teachers have come to their own conclusion that through their work and through their research, that this is truly what is best for kids. And it's transformational. But to that last comment, that very last statement is so true. We need to never lose sight of that. It is a multi-year process, and it is going to take lots of support along the way to get there. This is not something where you flip a switch and it happens. But I'm telling you, as I go out in the schools and visit classrooms throughout the district, it's happening in pockets all over the place. I was at Whitlow Elementary School today with third grade classes, talking to three third grade students. And they were, they had their playlist on their computers. And I said, what's a playlist? And this little girl said to me, well, it's my teacher personalizes my instruction for me. That way I have the activities and lessons that I need to help me grow as a learner. This is a third grader.
Wow.
She knew exactly what the purpose was and why her teacher was personalizing instruction for her. And she wasn't the only one. I talked to two other kids and, you know, basically said the same thing in their own words. So, you know, we are getting there. We've come a long ways, but we have a long ways to go. But our teachers need the support to continue to make this happen.
Right. And, you know, when we started this, our goal was that in, within five years, all of our schools would have some level of personalized learning and instruction going on within their building. And I say, with what Kayla's done, it really hasn't necessarily been in all four of these schools that she's worked with this year. And these four schools were, they submitted an application. I don't know if we told you about that part, but they submitted an application. Actually, it was more than four schools. And we chose these four schools because they had the best plan, and we felt like they were most ready to move in this direction. So that's why these four schools were chosen. And we were excited that we had schools at every level to be able to do that, to really kind of become those model schools, to, you know, step out there and blaze the trail for us with personalized learning. But, you know, with having that goal of having schools that jump into this, they can't do that without our support. So we had our four schools this year with full implementation. Our goal is by 2019, 2020. They're going to be small next year with what they do, kind of roll it out with a small group and see how it goes, what they need to tweak for next year, and then be able by 2019, 20 to really be able to roll it out across their school. Our goal is next year to have Cohort Two come in. We have five more schools that are interested in participating next year. Some of those are ones that applied last year. They're more ready this year to roll out. And in order for us to do that, we're going to need a little bit more support. You know, an additional staff member potentially to be able to help us do that. And then also the idea of having consultants that can come in and help us think outside the box. Sometimes if we just hear ourselves talk all the time, we are just, you know, just encapsulated in Forsyth County schools. So having those outside folks come in and say, have you thought of this? Have you considered this possibility? Have you looked at it this way? Really helps us continue to grow and think and become even better at the goals that we have. So just to end with this last quote from William Pollard, "Learning and innovation go hand in hand. The arrogance of success is to think that what you did yesterday will be sufficient for tomorrow." And it really goes with what Dr. Bearden is always talking about. You're either getting, we're either getting better or we're getting worse. There is no status quo. And that's really what this is about and helping us move forward and continuing to improve in our school system and what we're offering for our students, because it is what's best for kids.
I think it all started when Dr. Bearden came on board and made two non-negotiables. And that was its learning and the learning profile.
Exactly.
And this is making it work. Because we've talked about this a long time. We've been heading this way for many, many years. But to see it finally, the boots on the ground where you all are working hand in hand with these schools. And kudos to those schools to step out and say, we want to try this.
Right. Absolutely.
It will change the whole district. It will change the whole district.
Right. And we did, Tom had made the comment earlier about the social emotional learning. You know, when we started this, that was really one of the, a separate pillar. And we kind of talked about it when we made that presentation last month. If you noticed, it wasn't really mentioned as one of the tenets that we're using now because it really is something like we said, it's got to be across the board. It's not something that, you know, you're necessarily going to wait on, you know, while you're doing other things. It's something that needs to occur every day in every classroom across the board for all of our students.
It's really a foundation for personalized learning. You do that first, and then you layer this on top.
So is that what she said, that schools, some schools weren't prepared for this? They did not have the foundation. So what do, is that, is it a culture thing that they have to get before they're ready for this or what?
It's a lot of things. It's the, it's the culture piece. It's that growth mindset with their teachers and, you know, their leaders being willing to step out there. You know, some of us are a little tentative. We're like, okay, well, somebody else go first, and let me see how it goes for you. We'll be thinking about it and see what kind of happens. But it's just, yeah, kudos to those four schools that said, okay, we're jumping in. You know, whatever happens, we're going to learn from this and, you know, hopefully grow and be able to be a model for the school system in those different levels.
We started the presentation with a quote that said, what about tomorrow's problems? That we don't even know what's coming and happening. I mean, we think of Mark Zuckerberg today. He's testifying before the Hill and talking about things we didn't expect come out of what's happening, but it's happening. So we can go fix it, and that's his attitude of taking it. And so I see that same thing here again. So we can look at reality in our lifetime and see what had happened. And I've been thinking about it since I was in high school. And I look back at the mastery, for example. And mastery learning, you know, it's about learning what you need to learn through your passions. And so if you'd taken my passion for music and taught me math, I would have learned a whole lot more than I learned. Even though I did the tools, I could have learned it. And that's different. And so I'm excited about what I'm hearing.
Yeah. It is exciting. But it is something, you know, it does take time. It's having those conversations with, not, just telling a teacher you can teach math through music is a lot easier said than done.
Yeah.
It takes time to process that. And what are your lessons going to look like? And how can you do those cross-curricular lessons and support students in their passions and those kinds of things?
And part of personalized learning is choice and voice. And we've been giving our teachers choice and voice too through our professional development. And I think that has been very, very popular and very instrumental in moving this work forward. Like I said, I saw that at Whitlow today. Whitlow's not one of those four schools. And like, we have pockets all over the district where we have teachers who I would call trailblazers who are really all in on personalized learning. And they're talking to one another, they're talking to the teachers in these four schools. So although next year, we will technically only have nine schools and the two cohorts, don't think it's not happening in other schools because it absolutely is.
Well, technology's enabling it. It's allowing us to do it, but the teacher has to get that. And it doesn't, all personality types, and you can probably speak as good as anybody. Not everybody gets that, and you have to understand how that can enable that, probably.
Well, and the great thing is, one thing that Two Rev talked to us about that's really resonated with, I think, Kayla and myself, and Lynn too, because we're professional learning, is that you can't have two cultures of learning. So if you're expecting learning to be personalized for students and follow those design principles, learning for teachers has to be the same. And so as Dr. Bearden said, with our new DCD days and how they're organized, they really do empower teachers. And so a lot of the things that you're seeing carrying from one school to another is where teachers from Shiloh or teachers from other schools have led sessions at those district collaboration days, and then other teachers are learning from them. So it's exciting to see both teachers and students being empowered and having these opportunities.
Well, then you have the elementary schools, and the kids are taught that way, and they go to middle school, and it's going to be what? I mean, you've got to work on that laterally too.
Right.
Which is what we see with one of our schools that has applied. They're a feeder school for Shiloh.
And with South this year, I worked with South's PLCs, also South High. And one of their days for a PLC day was to go to Shiloh and just see what was happening because they were a feeder. And it was so fun to walk the high school teachers around to the different classes at Shiloh because that's really got, what got more of the teachers on board. And the PLC, there were some who were a little skeptical, but they realized if students can do this in elementary school, then what can they do in high school? Or I at least need to be ready for these kids because they're the ones to be here.
Same thing I've been saying from work perspective. You know, I look at the employees today and I look at the kids and see what they're doing compared to the way you work today. It's going to be different, very different.
I like that four schools stepped up so they don't feel like it's one more thing for them to do. They want to do it. Not like, what they're doing now, are they going to make us do? So they're taking the lead is big.
Well, and it's great too, because at each of those schools, it's part of the application. And that's why I think some schools maybe didn't apply to begin with, but it's led by teachers, not just the leaders. And so they have a design team that is teacher-led, and they have a project lead who is not a school administrator who has time outside of the classroom. That's one of the things that we ask for. So they have to figure out what their allotment is, a way to make that happen. Because Kayla's there once a week. We want someone there boots on the ground all the time who's invested in this work.
Wow. So that is a big commitment.
Expectations, right.
That just ties into that breakfast we went to, and the economic breakfast this morning and talking about how we all grew up with a dream of owning our own house. But the reality is, the millennial generation are not buying houses. That there are more and more multi-housing people want. Instantaneous things, there's less office space needed because people are working from home. It is different, Tom. It's just going to be totally different. So our students are different, and they're going to have to face and live in that world. This is just fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little excited.
Next is construction update with Tom Winning.
Good afternoon. We're out pictures. We're getting too far along.
So fortunately, we experienced a solid month of progress on both Alliance Academy and Denmark High School, really as both are in their final stages. So no photos, but hopefully the words will suffice, so be brief. So starting with Alliance, you may recall, 30 days ago, we did receive the certificate of occupancy from the fire marshal. And importantly, over the last 30 days, the contractor really has done a very good job of completing the punch list, working through things like MEP commissioning, HVAC, test imbalance. And we really wanted that scope complete and divorced and separated prior to us bringing in our FFNE process, starting with furniture. Simultaneously with the punch list being complete at Alliance the last 30 days, we now have our intrusion alarm up and operational, as well as our security cameras and the communication with AT&amp;T Comcast tying back here. Having said all that, furniture installation will begin April 18th, so next Thursday. And following that, in logical sequence, will be the CTAE equipment, which is pretty significant at Alliance Academy, much more so than some of our other schools in the past. And then just logically, given the sensitivity and expense of the information technology equipment, that will be the last activity. But having said all that, you know, that transpires over the next 30 days, so Brandy and her team will have a comfortable time to assimilate into the building. So, you know, good news on Alliance, but no photos. Similarly, for Denmark, very proactively, the team brought in really the fire marshal inspection team. It's not just one person, given the 450,000 square feet, the multiple buildings, 110 acres. So we had four fire marshals for three days, knowing that it was a preliminary inspection, given the, you know, complexity and size of what Denmark is. So March 23rd, when they were complete, fortunately, there were a dozen items to work through, some miscellaneous life safety, ADA compliance, some interpretation-type issues, but regardless, you know, it's incumbent on us to work through that. So fortunately, over the past three weeks, that work has been physically executed in the field, such that the fire marshal inspection team will be back at Denmark High School this Thursday, and we do anticipate getting certificate of occupancy, if not that Thursday, again, given the complexity versus some of our smaller projects, we might have a day or two beyond that. But the point is, while punch list took 30 days at Alliance, Denmark being significantly greater at the 450,000 square feet, we're looking at that punch list to be 45 days instead of 30. That gets us to June 1st. Similarly, intrusion alarm, security cameras, the same process I described at Alliance. The beauty of the synchronicity is all that Alliance work will be complete on the FFNE side to just efficiently roll into the workflow. At Denmark, beginning June 1st, and as much as the other tangent of that is, the work that we did want to complete in advance being the sports, getting spring football there, all that's happening, that's ready. The same applies to the music camps and some of the summer programs to help get the Denmark school spirit started, even before the academic period starts, is all happening as it should. So having said all that, Heather moves in, you know, a little later than Brandy with her team, but comfortable time and good workflow efficiency for the FFNE process at Denmark.
Yeah, but that's not a surprise. I mean, we expected that in the beginning, we were going to be a little bit later getting into Denmark, but still in plenty of time, so.
So is your vacation September, August 3rd?
We'll see with the next Bible, May 22nd, just roll right into that potentially.
Four years from now?
There we go.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to bring up? No, no action items. An entertaining motion to go in executive session for personnel and student records?
So moved.
By Tom, a second by Nate, it's y'all in favor?